At this time, I will call on Councilmember Jenkins, who will lead us in the indication, followed by a pleasure of leaders.
Lord, thank you for this day. Thank you for our city. Thank you for those that care enough to be engaged in the processes that move us forward. Give us grace, wisdom, and love for mankind as we deliberate the issues at hand and come to resolution. In Christ's name we pray. Amen.
A pleasure of leaders to the life of the United States of America and to the Republic, where we stand as one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Will the clerk please hold the law for the establishment of a law?
Johnson, Virginia?
Yes.
Johnson, Roberts?
Here.
Johnson, Smith?
Present.
Johnson, Harris? Mayor Draper?
Here. A quorum is established. Is there a motion to waive the reading now and approve the minutes of the January 16th committee?
Seven.
Seven.
Will the clerk please hold the law?
Johnson, Virginia?
Yes.
Johnson, Roberts?
Yes.
Johnson, Smith?
Yes.
Mayor Draper?
Yes, those minutes are approved. Folks, are there any additions or deletions to the agenda? With that, then, I will move that we adopt the agenda as presented. Is there a second?
Second.
Will the clerk please hold the law?
Johnson, Virginia?
Yes.
Johnson, Roberts?
Yes.
Johnson, Smith?
Yes.
Mayor Draper?
Yes, the agenda is approved. First item on the agenda tonight is a very special recognition. Mr. Valiant, John Valiant, if you could, please come forward to the podium. We have a very special proclamation from Mr. Valiant, who has served honorably, capably, for years on the Anderson Historic Preservation Commission. And I would like to read this proclamation for you now. City of Anderson Proclamation. Whereas John Valiant has served the City of Anderson as a member of the Anderson Historic Preservation Commission since February 14th, 2012, and is chairman since January 2013 with dedication and distinction. And whereas Mr. Valiant's 12 years of devoted service have been marked by exemplary and energetic leadership of the numerous accomplishments of this commission, which will continue to have revitalizing and growing impact on our community. And whereas these accomplishments include reviewing 172 certificates of appropriateness, designations of the West 15th Street Historic District, the Downtown Historic District, the McClellan Historic District, and designations of the Anderson Hand Kitchen and Noble Cottage as historic properties. And whereas, under John's leadership, the Anderson Historic Preservation Commission updated and approved the commission's bylaws, the design guidelines for downtown Tyler Hill, West 15th Street, and McClellan Historic Districts, and revised the paint palettes for these historic districts. And whereas Mr. Valiant announces his resignation as a member of the Anderson Historic Preservation Commission as of December 31st, 2023. Now therefore, the Anderson City Council hereby commands John Valiant for his outstanding service and leadership to this city and its citizens for the manner in which he carried out his duties and responsibilities of preserving our historical properties and districts. Witness our hands and seal of the City of Anderson. This is the 6th day of February 2024. Sign all members of the Anderson City Council. Congratulations, John Valiant. Thank you. Would you be honored if you'd like safety orders?
I would. Just a few minutes. First of all, I'd like to thank Councilmember Jenkins, who nominated me to meet the commission way back to 2011 or '12 when it was up. And the commissioners supported me in every way, and the council also supported me as well. Really appreciate it. And the staff who worked with us, the firemen, the marshals, and the staff that worked in, Hannah Bryant, just really helped out greatly. So I really appreciate that, and I'll miss it, but I think it's time to move on.
Yes, sir. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Councilmembers.
John, thank you. Great leadership. Really moved things forward for us. I truly appreciate you and the time it takes to give of yourself in this capacity. There are very few meetings that John ever missed. Always present, always engaged. And that is a common thread between he and his wife, Bess, and Bess, thank you for allowing him to give us your time. Bess served on museum board for me for several terms and was an outstanding servant in that capacity as well. So you two are a fine example of what we need in our community and truly appreciate you.
Thank you.
Thank you for your time. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Our historic areas are headed in the right direction. They were erected under your... Let me get to our staff.
Thank you.
Yes, we definitely appreciate your service, your service to you and your dedication to the city. So thank you.
John, we do very much appreciate your leadership. You have very capably done this. Anderson is in a better position because of...
I missed the most important person, Toby Manning.
Oh, yes, sir. Yes, sir. We'd like to take a picture with you. Let me get Bess up.
No.
Yes, sir. Come on, Bess, you're not bad.
Okay, guys. How are you relating? What are we gonna do with the gang? Okay, everybody. Bill first, right here. One, two, three. Now hold on. One, two, three. Looks good. Okay. One, two, three. Okay, we'll do silly ones. Congrats.
Now, you're truly enjoyed.
There you go.
Okay, the next item on the agenda is to receive public comments regarding the city manager's proposed division of the city. This was discussed at our last council meeting. This is redistricting. The statute refers to it as a proposed division. Mr. Folks, I will just have you introduce the topic and the process.
Yes, sir. One of the highlights of the city manager's course is once the 10-year census is done, and we did it out of 2020, is to actually come up with a plan to actually publish a change, actually redefine the city to support the government, to ensure... We've done that, and I've consulted legal, but legally, I think we've done everything we were required to do. But I want the process, I want a frame, and we use the established Alabama framework, which has been used before. And Mr. Mike Cruz is here to just explain the processes that we use and where we are.
Thank you, Mike.
Good to see you all again. I've had to be as brief as possible. Sometimes that's hard for me to do. Yes, this is every 10 years. The design is after every 10-year census. Population in each... Sorry. Population in each city has changed issue. And so this is designed to make sure there's kind of equal representation, equal weighting for each voter in each ward. So one voter in one ward has the same kind of ranking as or weight as a voter in another. So that's kind of the basics of it. Of course, through this process, you don't really need to redistrict incumbents. You don't want you guys to have to run against each other. You want to try to keep communities of interest together. You don't really want to split up, kind of tightly knit communities. We have... Part of it is minority representation. Want to make sure you stay away from packing, also called packing minorities, or diluting the minority voters. And also, the city, of course, your target population for each ward is the total city population divided by four. For Ward 1, it has four wards, so divided by four, so your target's going to be 5,391 for each ward. And that's kind of what we're trying to get to. Typically, the deviation, the percentage deviation from trying to get to that target, that is about plus or minus 5%. And I think that we've done a really good job of getting well below that. As on the proposed map, Ward 1 almost is the target on the right at minus 5. 0.09% deviation. And so for Ward 2, minus 1.8. Ward 3 is at 0.87, and Ward 4 is at 2.8. So every ward is below kind of about 3% deviation. So really, really looks good as far as reaching the target. Let me see. I'm sure I'm trying to convince this. Believe. Of course, the map's over there. You have your existing map demographics. Of course, at the start of this process, we take the 2012 boundaries and kind of marry them to the latest census numbers. So after we marry that, that's when we find out, okay, where we have shifts. Of course, for Anderson, Wards 2 and Wards 3 had to expand. They were low on population, so 1 and 4 had to give up territory to kind of hit that target. And the map I just brought in, that shows another layer there that has the areas of change. So it's a little bit more helpful, a little bit overlaying the bread. So not... Compared to some cities, it's not as many changes as I thought we would have to make. Some of the census blocks and last thing, they're bounded by the census blocks. And each census block is kind of like a city block. It's bounded by road, rail, road path, or stream. So we're kind of... And of course, in each one of those blocks, you have a headcount, you have your total population. Of course, broken down by demographics, race demographics. And so you're just pretty much assigning that census block to a ward. So it's just kind of a process of assigning census blocks to the wards, and that's trying to get to the target, target population. So I'm very pleased with the map and the numbers.
Thank you, Mike. Before we open it up for public comments, do the members of council have any questions for Mike at this point? Thank you, Mike. Okay, at this time, okay, so once again, process, the council received the city manager's proposed recommendation at our last council meeting on the 16th. The council has 30 days from that point to act on this proposed division. At this time, I will call on, if any members of the public wish to speak to the proposed division of the city, now is the time to do so. We'll do so in an orderly fashion. Comments will be limited to three minutes apiece. So I will open up the floor now for who wishes to speak to the proposed division issue. And if you would, in accordance with our rules, please state your name and address. And again, please limit your comments to three minutes or less. The clerk will be keeping time.
Good evening to everyone. I'm glad to be here. I have... I'm just a community person, so all the deviation stuff that he talked about has me confused. So I'm basically trying to get some clarity in some language that I can understand. So my question is, what did you guys... Mr. Folks, I guess I should ask you. Did you consider anything other than the population numbers? Because if I remember correctly, when you met with you and talking, you said the only thing that you guys considered was the population.
The numbers.
The numbers.
Councilman Asher? Yes, please, yes.
Only thing we used was the numbers that were given from the census.
So you didn't look at the votes registration or nothing?
We can't. The only thing we can look at was numbers. We cannot look at race, nothing. All we looked at the hard numbers that were given to us from the census count.
I need to say something about ratio or something.
No, no, I mean, again, it's the population what we got there, but we just looked at numbers. We look at numbers.
And with me looking at what I'm seeing, if you have a deviation, I don't know, you guys consider deviation and reduction the same. But I look at the map that you guys had and the proposed map and the existing map. The proposed map had black voters at 48%. This, not... The existing map had black voters at 48%. The proposed map had at 45%. So to me, that's a reduction. Is that by the violation of the Voting Rights Act?
Yeah, no, 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 this is... Now, there's only a minute left, but go ahead. You...
I thought, but here you couldn't put minutes on me.
Well, no, we did. It is great.
Yeah, I'll do, okay.
Yes, ma'am.
Do you want to finish and then...
We'll just speak of these later.
Can I answer that question?
Okay.
Well, I mean, again, your time is still. You may want to let her do it.
Let me ask my next question. If you only considered the population, how did you come up with the number of blacks and whites?
Let me say this one. Again, we look at the population, and then when we start doing the count, then you look at making ensuring that the race and all that equals out as well. That's what we do. Yes, ma'am.
Well, let's do it all in one time.
Okay, yeah. I'm sure someone else will ask it. I'll do it all in one.
Okay, does anyone else wish to be heard as to the proposed division of the city? Yes, sir. And if you would, please state your name and address for our record, and please limit your comments to three minutes or less.
I got questions here. First of all, we oppose the map. The map that is being proposed for the new ward, we oppose it. And the reason why? Now, Mayor, you guys didn't answer the questions that he can answer. You got to do the math. That's who I want to get answers from. Ward 1, on the new drawing board, on the old drawing board, Ward 1 had 2,515 people, for 43% of whites. Blacks and whites, Ward 1, is 2,815, for a percentage of 48.13%. Now, in the new map, whites is 2,446. And they went from 43% even up to 45.41%. Blacks, who have a population of 2,815 in Ward 1, now, under the new proposal, has 2,449, for 45.47%. Where is the only way for Steve people of course going to come from the perfect even, which are blacks? Blacks are majority. There, you went from 43... You went from 43% on the old map up to 45. You got 2% plus of whites, and their numbers are declining. You're gonna... You have Ward... I'm going to the map here. You have Ward 1, and you put... This is the old one.
This is the new one.
This is the new one, right? Okay, you're taking 300 and some odd blacks out of Ward 1, putting them over into Ward 2. Ward 2 already is 73-plus percent African-American. Ward 2 needs white people. But you're taking from the black community over in Ward 1. You're taking over 300 and some odd people, 366, I think it is. 366 people out of Ward 1, and putting them into Ward 2. That's considering that now, you can see the black vote all over the world. So what we're saying, no, 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 no. Ward 1 would be and is a majority African-American now. Ward 2 is majority African-American now. And Ward 3 is majority African-American now. That gives us 3 to 2.
And question, your three-minute sentence expired.
I'm sure it has.
It has, yes, sir.
But I'll see you in court.
Does anyone else wish to be heard, asked of the proposed division of the city?
No, Mr. Folks, I just said, we are the majority.
Yes, ma'am. If you would, please state your name and address, and if you would, again, please limit your comments to three minutes or less.
Good morning. My name is Dr. Anthony Beers. I'm currently an employee at Anderson High School, as a science instructor and a science department chair. I'm an Anderson city business owner for two businesses, yours Medical Touch, DNA Forensics, Bug Screens, and ACDW Property and Reservations LLC. And I am mandated to make sure I pay my taxes to the city of Anderson and Calvin County for Island Island. I'm speaking today on behalf of myself, a prior black female minority city council candidate, who ran for public office to represent Ward 1. As a black candidate running for public office at Ward 1, obtaining the votes in this ward was difficult for reason being this Ward 1 was predestined by several constituents to be represented by a white male incumbent. At the time, purposely ignoring all sorts of ethical issues in question. Even though the percentage of blacks in Ward 1 was 48.13%, and the percentage of whites was 43%, there was an obvious expectancy that this ward should be represented by a white male. The vote for Ward 1 was earned by me, a black female candidate, which constituted a runoff. However, voter suppression was at an all-time high. From polls not opening as scheduled, to abrupt historical poll site changes and locations, to voting machine issues the day of the election, to numbers of being recognized in the voting machine before voting began. All these acts was identified as voting manipulation, as oppression tactics. To my dismay, it has been brought to my attention that an unconstitutional act of redistricting a percentage of black voters from Ward 1 to Ward 2, which in turn would decrease a black popular vote in the ward, thus diluting the black votes in Ward 1, making it difficult for any candidate of color to obtain enough votes necessary to gain the position. Ensuring pressures would be placed on any candidate of color because it is a proven fact, based on the histories and the political discrepancies and ongoing lawsuits. Here, lawsuits, the candidate would not have a fighting chance at winning. The candidate that wins at this point would not necessarily be based on votes of honor, respect, and due diligence and solitude, but instead, personal and political nonethical issues. This act of redistricting warrants an investigation as to being unlawful based on Section 2 of the Voting Rights Act and the rules of redistricting of the Voting Rights Act regulations as it relates to the Constitution. A fair and equal opportunity is guaranteed to all constituents who desire to represent their local community in public office and should not be based on color, creed, religion, or political status, but honor, ethics, and integrity dedicated to the elected position providing public service to their community. And looking at the...
You have five seconds.
And looking at the Ward 1, Ward 1 took 69 whites, and...
Okay, sir, your three-minute sentence expired. Other people probably wish to speak, so... Does anyone else wish to be heard as the proposed division of the city?
Thank you for your time, and it did not go off until now.
I'm keeping time, too.
Well, who the bitch is trying to keep my ass? I'm just asking, who the bitch is trying to keep? Y'all say it.
And it didn't go off before I gave the number.
And we can all keep time. It's a second differential. Okay, if you would, please state your name and address for our records, and limit your comments to three minutes or less.
Name, age, gender, 14, they all are. But you did say that you was going to keep the time, so you missed each people.
Well, she is keeping the time. My boss is keeping the time.
But my thing is that, you know, I got this thing about regardless of who you are, what you are, if the white go vote in Ward 2 or 1, and if they wanted to run for office, and if the blacks choose, they want to choose the white over a black, that they choice. I got this thing that people design things about time that people own with all those people in after city. That the black population of the city alone will put felony on our young blacks, so they can't vote. Oh, they got bullshit charges. And, you know, and that's upsetting. I... But when we get to the city, when we don't worry about black and white, just wrong and right. When we get to the city, there are whites have opportunity to vote for a black if they choose, regardless of our nation. Now, I done looked into it, so way up here now, saying some things that I think that should be in somewhere else, so we wouldn't have three minutes. When you deal with population and redistricting, I think the people need to have a voice more than three minutes. Thank you.
Does anyone else wish to be heard as the proposed division of the city? Yes, sir. If you would, please state your name and address and limit your comments to three minutes or less. Thank you, sir.
Rachel Burden, 1326 Thompson Drive. I just wanted to comment. Now, we've been through the same procedure over 20 years ago, and we're still being the same old. I'm looking at the table, people that have been through it, struggled, died, and protested, but we still still got the same boot from our parents, going on to the glory. We still can't get along. We just find this. This America or something, Latin America, sorry, world class, America should be better. I thought it was the question with the model city. Looked like it's going down to college school city. I got some talk with the mental talent.
Yes, sir. Does anyone else wish to be heard as the proposed division of the city? Yes, sir. If you would, again, in accordance with our rules, please state your name and address and limit your comments to three minutes or less.
Thank you. City Council, my name is Ronald Starks. My address is 201 Druid Hills Road in Addison. I have two questions. One from the council, whoever wants to answer it, and this question is simply put. Anderson is a small problem we'll be facing. We have legislators that cannot even make a decent map for the state. My question, Mr. Folks, is here we are, we've approved this, or given it to... What happens when the city, I mean, Alabama, can come back, have the Supreme Court say, hey, your map's not right? Will that affect us at all?
I'll let Bruce answer that.
State map is on play.
State map.
Still in the congressional.
Sure. Now, my last comment is a comment. I've heard a lot of people come up and talk about how bad this area is. And I've heard a lot of people come up and say, well, we're not giving this vote, we're not giving that vote. You know, you guys keep using the same word, vote. You don't have voters. For example, Mr. Jenkins won by 43 votes on his last term. I've seen the population votes on each candidate here. We have less than 50% of the people voting. Yes, there are issues, but you actually got to vote to get anywhere. That's all my time. Thank you.
Does anyone else wish to be heard as the proposed division of the city? Yes, sir. Again, if you would, in accordance with our rules, please state your name and address and limit your comments to three minutes or less.
I just wanted to add to some of the comments that has already been made. The last one is, why can't we do things and get along? Because, you know, salt, one's black, one's white. And they get their company up and is agreeing to make things better. So we got to do that. But one question that came to my mind, even though it was later before, about the population that how it was considered. And Folks, I think you said that race was not considered, it was not first.
Again, that was not the intent. What we did is look at the numbers once the number come, because again, we're talking black and white. When we're talking about whatever, you know, numbers are coming, we give these out, and we're coming with a number. Then they look at the population. Oh, that's when we start saying this is the population, this is the race, and this person. But without this all of black, white, we talk about it in the entire. So what I want to say, we looking at the entirety to make sure we meet that target and stay within the deviation. That's what we did.
Okay. One thing that I think we should, sometimes, we just, we don't have to consider race. I don't, I don't know when it's going to be, but it's inevitable that we do, we consider it in certain things. And if you own a side that has, is in the majority, it's easier for you to dismiss it. But if you're on the side that's in the minority, that's a much tougher question, and that's a much tougher subject that I suppose to consider. But I think that if the percentage of voters in each district is not eventually considered, then you have a really bad, a high chance of things being outpilt and in another good light.
Does anyone else wish to be heard as the proposed division of the city? There appear to be none. I will now close that public hearing. Councilmembers will discuss this as we take up the resolution. Mr. Folks, are there any unfinished business? With that, then, let's move on to the consent agenda. Is there a motion to adopt the consent agenda? I'm moving. Is there a second?
Second.
Will the clerk please hold the law?
Johnson, Virginia?
Yes.
Johnson, Roberts?
Yes.
Johnson, Smith?
Yes.
Councilman Smith?
Yes.
Mayor Dragan?
Uh, yes. The consent agenda is approved. The first resolution on the agenda tonight is that which was the subject of the public hearing, and it is a resolution approving the city manager's proposed division of the city. Again, we were provided this at our meeting on the sixteenth. This is all part of the process. Is there a motion for passage and adoption?
Somebody.
Is there a second? Council discussion.
I can, uh, somebody else.
No, no, go ahead, go ahead.
Okay.
Let's, let's limit everybody's comments to three minutes for all of us. You did.
Gotcha. It did get you on that, it did. Okay. I might add this to my, my council comments.
Yeah, you'll have the whole comment, yeah.
So I think one of the main points that we are missing is the two thousand and twelve, well, the two thousand, two thousand and ten census created our two thousand and twelve Ward map. That two thousand and twelve Ward map showed there was a fifty point five-two percent white percentage in Ward One and a forty-four point sixteen percent percentage of black population in Ward One. Over the span of two thousand and ten to two thousand and twenty, that white population has decreased. So that existing map has shown that we're at forty, can you show me what that number is on the existing map for the four one?
Yeah, Ward one, forty-three.
Forty-eight and forty-three percent. That shows a decline in the white population in Ward One. However, population has also decreased in Ward Two. So now, what we have to do is we have to take a certain percentage of population from Ward One, Ward Three, or Ward Four to make sure that we have equal population in every single ward. We also, race is a variable, but it's not like we can just go and say, hey, I wanna take a pocket of the white population in Ward One and move it over, move it over in Ward Two. Those districts have to be compact and contiguous. So that is why we moved up that way. If we chose, if you're looking at the map right here, that blue part, there's a pocket between the yellow, the orange, and the yellow. Let's say we chose to move that yellow into that pocket in between everything. We're taking a large black population and compacting that into Ward Two, decreasing it even more in Ward One. So we chose not to do that because then what that would be diluting significantly. Compared the two thousand and twelve map to this map, we are moving from a white majority populated ward into a equal opportunity ward. That's how we got those numbers. That's how those things work. I'll continue to talk more about that and those, and those comments, so I don't take too much time.
And we can also arguably address any other problems. Does any, any other council comments? Yes, sir.
I think everybody, everybody focus on-
What is it?
And I, and I think, I think what we missed is, we had a population, and they said that the population was twenty-one, five, six. And when they get to talking about the deviations, we had to try to split that up to make every ward equal five thousand three hundred ninety-one. So the deviation numbers come in when we get to talking about how many, the difference between what it was or what it is to a vote. And I think, and I, I had extensive conversation when I was on, who was on the, on the map because the term minority kind of didn't use. And I'm sitting there saying, well, in Anderson, we're the majority. In Anderson, we're the majority. In Anderson, we're the majority.
And?
And?
Ms. Bradford.
And, and the crazy part is, is with the, with the majority, and we have two wards that are, that were made by legislation that have to be represented by black. We have two wards. The way it's set up, they have to be represented by black. They don't say which ward they have to be, they don't say which one it is, but the way the lines are drawn, it's two wards. Now, the third ward, or the first Ward One, because of the way the people have moved around and it's a, and a part of it is not, not, a part of it is the housing authority, we're listening to justice. People have been moved down to Wards Two and Three, and we're working to force them. But there in Ward One, more blacks have moved to Ward One because of the housing situation, right? But we're not going, there's nothing being done to intentionally deprive black people from getting their places. Now, what, what's being deprived is, black people are not getting out and voting like they should. And that's, to lose, to, to lose, to, to win an election by less than a hundred votes in a city of twenty, twenty-one thousand, says a lot. Says a lot, that means those people who were there were tight, tight relationships.
Okay. Any, any other, any other council comments during this, on the resolution? The clerk, please call the roll.
Councilman Jenkins?
Yes.
Councilman Roberts?
Yes.
Councilman Smith?
Yes.
Mayor Dragan?
Uh, yes, the resolution passes. We have two ordinances to take up tonight, the first of which is amending Section thirty-three point ten C prohibiting the carrying concealed pistols without a license. This is on its first reading. Last year, state law changed and legislation repealed the prohibition of carrying pistols without a permit. And so this ordinance gets us in conformity with state law. It is on its first reading. First of all, is there, is there a motion to read by title only?
Somebody.
Is there a second?
So.
At this time, I'll call for a public hearing on the issue of reading by title only. Is there anyone who wishes to be heard as to that specific issue? There appear to be none. I will close that public hearing. Again, it's on its first reading. Is there a motion for unanimous consent for immediate consideration?
Somebody.
Is there a second?
Second.
Well, the clerk, please call the roll on the issue of unanimous consent.
Councilman Jenkins?
Yes.
Councilman Roberts?
Yes.
Councilman Smith?
Yes.
Mayor Dragan?
Uh, yes, unanimous consent having been granted. Is there a motion for passage or adoption?
Somebody.
Somebody.
Council discussion. Here, will the clerk, please call the roll.
Councilman Jenkins?
Yes.
Councilman Roberts?
Yes.
Councilman Smith?
Yes.
Mayor Dragan?
Yes, that ordinance passes. Our second ordinance is one incorporating the proposed division into our city ordinances. It too is on its first reading. Is there a motion to read by title only?
Somebody.
Is there a second?
Somebody.
At this time, open the public hearing on the issue of reading by title only. Is there anyone who wishes to be heard as to that specification?
Of title only?
Uh, no, I would actually like to hear the description of what you're trying to ward up. If it's not an actual description, like-
Yeah, it's a lengthy, meaty, balanced description. Then it is, it is available on the website. And is there one who wishes to be heard as to that? I'll now close that public hearing. Will the clerk, please call the roll on reading by title only?
Councilman Jenkins?
Yes.
Councilman Roberts?
Yes.
Councilman Smith?
Yes.
Mayor Dragan?
Uh, yes. And again, this is an ordinance amending Section one one-two D describing the wards of the city. Is there a motion for unanimous consent for immediate consideration?
Somebody.
Is there a second?
Somebody.
Will the clerk, please call the roll.
Councilman Jenkins?
Yes.
Councilman Roberts?
Yes.
Councilman Smith?
Yes.
Mayor Dragan?
Uh, yes. Is there a motion for passage and adoption?
Somebody.
Is there a second? Council discussion. Will the clerk, please call the roll.
Councilman Jenkins?
Yes.
Councilman Roberts?
Yes.
Councilman Smith?
Yes.
Mayor Dragan?
Yes, the ordinance passes. Just folks, do we have any additional or other matters that may come to the board, council?
No, sir.
Okay. We do have two public comments scheduled for tonight. Ms. Bradford, you are up first. And again, if you would, and in accordance with our rules, please state your name and address and which town does the free mentor list or less.
Do I speak now? Or you have? Listen, you know, we have been coming up here for years, asking the council for this, that, and other. But disappointingly, we never get anything to come up here for. We come up, we speak, and people come. I've seen people come up here over the years, long before you were born, before you even thought about the term. In fact, before I even came to town, there was only one black on the city council. It was my word that made it possible for you and you to be here, just like the county commissioner, the African American, my word, just like Bubba Boy, state representative, my word. But this council never, ever addresses the real issue of what's going on in the black community. So mayor, I think the best thing for us to do, and I'm listening to you young folks, talk about something you really don't know about, redistricting. State of Alabama used the same old plan a few weeks ago to stop us from having a second congressional black district. They are stopping us from having a third majority black ward. Now, it's up to the black folks, if you wanna keep this, you have the numbers to have it. He can be replaced by a black man. He can be replaced by a black person that Ward One. They holding on to your power. And one thing I will agree with what he said, votes, votes, vote, black people, because you live in a state that does not give a damn about our rights. We got Attorney General and the governor, the two top law enforcers in this state, go to Washington three times to stop us from having a congressional black district too. Attorney General Steve Marshall, old boy, I'd like to meet him in person, and kick up his heels, Confederate Ivy. They take our rights for granted. And what you said there, son, there is no fairness in Alabama for black people. The only rights that black people ever got in Alabama had to come through federal court, just like we're gonna go to federal courts and change this board. Thank you.
Okay, is there Joanna Huddleston?
Yes, ma'am.
And if you would, just in accordance with our rules, state your name and address and which town does the free mentor list. Thank you.
Um, would I be able to give you this?
Oh, yeah, sure.
Um, please, are-
Let's hear the lady.
Um, hi, my name is Jerika Huddleston. I reside at twenty-two ninety-six, um, Tom Braden in Woodland, Alabama. I'm a local councilman and councilwoman. I am representing today the Combat Veterans Motorcycle Association, also known as the CBMA. We are a global nonprofit in which we serve the vets, helping vets cause. The CBMA is dedicated to assisting veterans and their families, as you can see detailed in the flyer that I provided reading. We will be hosting veterans, primarily from Alabama, but there will be some that have already RSVP'd from all over the country that join us here in Anderson, November twenty-six through twenty-eight for our Alabama State Meeting. The estimated number for attendance this year is over three hundred, and the revenue generated during these three CBMA's, these three days that the CBMA are here for the Alabama State Meeting in Anderson will be very helpful for the local businesses. The restaurants, the shops, the hotels, and many other businesses will profit. We would love to have y'all come out and see us if you would like to stop by and meet some of the veterans. We appreciate the roots of Anderson being a military town and know that with your aid, this could be the best state meeting yet. Veterans will see what a wonderful place Anderson is to visit and will plan to come back. We are asking for the rental fee for the Anderson City Meeting Center to be waived. We have booked April twenty-sixth and twenty-seventh to host the event here. By waiving the fees, Anderson City would be helping our chapter be able to assist many more veterans throughout the year. And having the support of the city that is hosting the state meeting is valuable on so many levels. Since we are going to be hosting the CBMA National Store here alongside businesses owned by veterans and some locals, we will have very, a large number of motorcycles here in the parking lot, and it will be a very busy event, to say the least. We would like to have access, um, or A C N C for the whole two days. Money saved, that we'll be able to save, and be able to help so many more veterans throughout the year. We have helped veterans with a thousand dollars who lost everything to a car last year.
Ms. Bradford, you're, you're pretty sick. No, no, we, we thank you. We'll take this into consideration and your request.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, ma'am. Okay, let's move on to council comments. Mr. Jenkins in the apartment.
Um, just very briefly, want to thank staff. I'd like to thank East Alabama, pretty hard work to put them out together. And, and I do understand what it took to get us to where we are, and appreciate the efforts. Also, I'd like to shout out to council member Harris, who is recovering from an injury, and we wish you well, and welcome you back soon.
Let me, let me just say, thank y'all for coming out. Appreciate everybody who's here. And I said it last year, and I'll say it again. You know, respect is a thing that's given, but is also earned. Now, I did have a standing remember on several occasions, saying, there's not an issue in Anderson, I don't mean to sit down at a table and have a conversation about, and come to a peaceful resolution. But you know, it get kind of old when people come up and they eyeball you, and I guess it's, I guess it's a bullying technique, I guess it's whatever it is, the name called, you know, um, and I say name called, because as opposed to having a, a sit-down conversation, you run the gill and holler every time I get up, every time I start to have a conversation. And, and y'all repeatedly see me ask the mayor and ask everybody, listen, leave them alone, they gonna do what they gonna do. Sitting here, coming here thinking that just because you've been around, just because you were born before me, you can sit up and say, son, you don't know what you're talking about? How do you know I don't know what I'm talking about? Whenever you turn around, and I, I've said this, and I've said it again, when there's issues in the black community, I'm on the city council. I'm a black man on the city council. Not one person will pick up their phone, but they're coming here and playing a game like we don't really care about what they say once they get to the last stand. There's ways that I'm really doing this, and respect goes a long way. And I said it last year, you don't have to respect me, just go and disrespect me. My name is Demetrius Roberts, you can call me D D. I'm not gonna be his son, I'm not gonna be the boy, I'm not gonna be into those things anymore. We grown, we gonna act like we grown. And I'm not the one who usually get upset or offended, but when you sit and continue to say something I don't know what I'm talking about, but what I'm seeing is, there is a comprehension level that we're not adhering to. There's a comprehension problem. And if we don't wanna comprehend you, that's fine. And if we don't want to comprehend it, that's fine. But at least let's sit down and talk about it before you sit and fix your mouth and say something I don't know what I'm talking about. A lot of the courses that have been, that have been asked now, has been asked. And that's my time. God bless y'all. And I'm two five six four nine nine four two one.
You know, what I have learned most, and, and, and yes, I am quite young, uh, but in my twenty-five years of living, is we are our own worst enemy. We truly are. Um, but I'm gonna stay after. So anybody who wants to stay and wants me to explain what I was trying to explain earlier, I don't mind doing so. But I, I have to say this because I feel like we're constantly going in circles in the black community. We get up here and argue back and forth every day and they're not. They're not. We are arguing with each other every single day. There were two black women who ran against each other in Ward One. No offense by me saying this, but there could have been a black woman in that seat had we been strategic. But we choose not to every time. We choose to go against each other. I had two black men run against me and then try to pin somebody else to run against me. And instead of supporting this young black woman, they decided to, oh, she's not, she doesn't know what she's talking about. She, she's not experienced, she's not at J K, when I was the only one who had a degree in political science, who worked for the United States House of Representatives and worked with the Congressional Black Caucus, the only candidate to do so. Instead of encouraging and amplifying our voices and unifying, we sit here and argue every single time. It gets old. We keep asking ourselves, why are we in this position? It's not because of these folks. It's because of us. We have sat down with former council members and it ended up in an arguing and fighting match and got nothing accomplished. It's a cycle. We do it every single time. It doesn't matter how much I explain something. We're not listening to understand. We're listening to rebuttal. That's what we're doing every single time. My grandfather fought this. I'm fighting this. Unfortunately, my children will fight this. My grandchildren will fight this. Until we get it right, I don't know if we ever will. I don't know if in my lifetime I'll see it. Because we've been saying and singing the same tune for years. Same tune. This is ridiculous. I should be learning from y'all. I want to. I desire to. Do you know how many times I have requested those who to come before me to sit down and have a conversation with me, but they choose not to like me for what reason I don't know, have never given me an opportunity, never given me a chance? And yes, I chose this territory. I have to have thick skin and I'm fine with that. This is what I was elected to do. But my goodness, we can't even get to the root word because we too worried about personal issues. Shame on y'all. I hope that I do better. I'm making a charge for my life to do better for the young ones who are coming after me. Because the example I have right now, our leaders have gone and passed, and rest in peace, Reverend Reynolds, Reverend Nettles. Rest in peace to the ones who have come and fought for truth and stand on that. Let me get our humble horses. Thank y'all.
I just wanted to briefly thank you folks for your work with Bruce and Mike on this map. Just looking at raw numbers and standard deviation is about to spare a map as could possibly be drawn. So thank y'all for your work there. With that, I will move, we stand in adjournment. Is there a second?
Second.
Will the clerk please call the roll?
Councilman Jenkins?
Yes.
Councilman Robert?
Yes.
Councilman Smith?
Yes.
Mayor Dragan?
Yes, we are adjourned.